I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Present.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mrs. Ruhl?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Present.
Mr. Sustich?
Here.
Nine members present this evening.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
Move the adoptions. Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 9 to 0. I need to announce executive sessions held October 28, 2013, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. The microphone is open for public comments on the one agenda item. If anyone wishes to make a comment.
Denise Dillon, 5969 in Ogahilla. Couple of questions we're wondering. I want to thank the board and the Federation that's not here for agreeing to a contract finally. But when will it be available to the public? Where would it be? And who can we get copies of?
We'll discuss that after we take the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Paceur, 3224, Rapaho Road. Since we have no details of the contract, I would appreciate any that you can share with us prior to the vote. And I'd also like to know if, assuming there are increases within the contract, is that built into the budget? Can we afford this? And where's the money going to come from otherwise? Thank you.
And I'll be addressing that again after the vote. Anything else? We're going to move into business items. And Mrs. Ruhl, I'm going to have somebody that's here take the Personnel Committee this evening since you don't have the agenda there with you.
Okay.
Mrs. Buckley, will you take the Personnel Committee for me this evening?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Under Personnel, we have one item, the ratification of the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, CBA. The Board approves the Administration's recommendation to ratify the collective bargaining agreement as presented between the Bethel Park School District and the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. The contract is effective July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2016. I move the adoption.
Second?
I didn't catch it. Is that you? Okay. Item one under Personnel Committee has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Sustich. Any discussion of this item before I have a roll call vote?
No discussion, but I have some comments, and I'll save those for afterwards in the Board comments section after you have read your statement.
That will be fine. Then, Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Absolutely emphatically yes.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruhl?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Yes.
Mr. Sustich?
Yes.
Motion passed 9 to 0.
Thank you. It's been a long road, and I think I can safely speak for this board and our community to say we are glad this negotiations process has now come to an agreeable conclusion for both parties so we can put this issue behind us. As I mentioned at our October meeting, this contract represents a great deal of hard work by both parties, and it certainly was a give-and-take process throughout the negotiations period. And while neither side can say they got everything they wanted in this contract, we believe that everything that is contained in this contract was done in the best interest of our students and community. Much has changed in public education since the negotiations process began in April 2010. While we knew going into the negotiations process that finances would be tight because of the limits that the Pennsylvania Legislature's Act 1 places on all school districts with regard to how they can increase taxes in a given year, we didn't know that a new governor would come in and drastically slash state funding for school districts, cutting millions from what the state previously gave to the district by essentially rolling state reimbursements back to the 2008 levels. This new and harsh financial reality made it even more difficult to negotiate. Throughout the negotiations process, this board still had to keep the district moving forward in terms of purchasing educational materials, upgrading technology, and keeping our buildings functioning in good condition. It has always been this board's goal to be fair with our teaching staff, to be able to provide them with a safe work environment, appropriate salaries, and quality health care. But at the same time, we needed to be able to preserve the financial viability of this district, not only for today, but for the future. We didn't want to set salaries we knew we could not financially support in the future and then be faced with difficult decisions of cutting programs or furloughing staff. We know those kinds of things negatively impact our students and our community. This new contract includes a one-year wage freeze for all teachers except for those 17 at the jump step for the 2010-11 school year. It provides raises of $1,100, $900, $1,000, $1,200, and $1,200, respectively, for the following five years. Teachers will contribute more to share the ever-rising cost of their health care. Effective January 1, 2014, teachers on steps 1 through 16 will contribute 7.5% of the cost of the health care premium. By the end of the contract, teachers on the first 16 steps will be contributing 10% of the costs. Teachers on steps 17 and 18 will begin contributing 9.5% on January 1, 2014, and their contributions will increase to 12% by July 2015. The new contract does not add any days to the school year or hours to the school day, but it does add an additional step to the teacher's wage scale, extending the time it takes for a teacher to reach the top of the scale from 17 to 18 years. Many of you have asked us why it took so long to settle this contract. Believe me when I say that both sides would have preferred to bring this process to a close sooner rather than later. While the public is mainly interested in salary and benefits, as I could tell from the questions at the microphone, the contract comprises many other issues that sometimes have a cost attached to them. It's the language in those issues that oftentimes make the negotiations process more difficult because it is only natural for each side to not want to give up language that they have fought long and hard for in previous contract negotiations. As our education world continues to change, contract language should reflect those changes. And we are here today with an agreement that will take us through the 2015-16 school year. I encourage everyone to put the negotiations process behind us and look to the future as we continue to provide education programs and instruction for our students to well prepare them for their futures. As many of you know, the district has traditionally held a contract signing ceremony with the Board, Administration, and members of each of our bargaining units negotiating teams. While we are not set up to do that this evening, the Administration and the Federation have set up a time to ceremonially sign the contract. We are appreciative of the efforts on part of both the negotiating teams, the state mediator, and the fact-finder to bring this prolonged process to an equitable conclusion. We are also thankful to the support of the Bethel Park community who encouraged us to stand strong for the students of Bethel Park and for the overarching financial stability of the school district. And now open the mic to public comments?
Governor?
Yes, Quanie?
Senator?
Okay. All right. Thanks. She's at her AIU meeting.
Okay.
Bye.
Just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Denise Dillon, 5969 in Ogahilla. Again, I understand you're having a signing at a later date. So that means the contract's not going to be available till that later date.
That's correct.
After that. Do we have a timeframe? Have we, everyone pretty much assumed it was going to be tonight?
As we did.
Wednesday.
It'll be Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we should have it on the website by Thursday.
What time? [laughing].
Come and pick it up. Thursday. [laughing].
May I ask Sergeant John Delalo, 1565, Lucille Drive. I want to make a correction. It has often said that the corporate administration has cut funding for public education. Nothing could be further from the truth. The corporate administration has actually spent more money on funds, I'm sorry, more money on state education, public school education than any administration since William Penn was governor. And I would hope that you would bear that in mind. The numbers are published. What fell off was the freebies from the federal government, which we were all encouraged to spend wisely. Apparently, we did. Some school districts are in dire straits. I would also like to, just as a matter of record, speak to House Bill 1189, which is alive and well. It has not been rejected by the Senate. Indeed, the Senate was not in session at the time it was reported that that was rejected. And the Senate will not be in session again until November the 12th. House Bill 1189 is something that bears a great deal of scrutiny. It's going to have quite an impact on us, and it may indeed take the form of Senate Bill 76. Only God knows what language will come out of the Senate of Pennsylvania. Being a frequent flyer to Harrisburg, trust me, I'm not sure how that place works at all. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the Board of Lee Ashland, I would also like to thank all of you for reaching this contract. But I also think that the state putting a cap on how far you could raise the taxes in any given year assisted in this. I hate to see it being taken negatively because it required you and the Federation to sit down and hopefully write a realistic contract that reflects what the community can afford, that probably has better language because of all the work you had to do to arrive, what is it? Oh, I thought you said some, I didn't think I'd been here two minutes. To arrive at the contract that you did get to. When I first heard that it was going to be a referendum, but only after it went over a certain percentage, I thought, that's a waste of time. However, I don't think there's a school district in Pennsylvania that has gone to a referendum yet, and I'd certainly be happy to be corrected. But I think it made all of you and the Federation arrive at a better contract which reflects what the district can afford. Because I do think in the past, when boards knew that they could raise the taxes, raise the taxes, raise the taxes, I think at some time, we gave away the store. And when you're saying that the people that don't have whatever they held in the first year of the contract, except the people at step 17, does that mean that all of those people who reached step 17 since 2010 will be getting a $35,000 wage increase?
There were 17 individuals that were at the jump step that will get a portion of their salary for 10-11. The rest of the teachers will have a wage freeze for the year 10-11.
Okay. But they will get that increase that was under the previous contracts, which I hope was 35,000.
A portion of that.
A portion of that. A portion of that.
Because there's a step added to the contract.
Oh, because they added step 18.
They added step 18. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll move into Board comments. Mr. Means, you don't have to comment if you don't want to. We kind of added that at the end here. We didn't really have a long agenda.
Yeah, I would like to thank the law firm of Melo Brongo and Melo. I think they did an excellent job representing us. I'd also like to extend my thanks to Nancy Rose and Matt Howard and Joe Rosman, who were also part of the negotiating team. I would also like to dispel the idea that the board was not present in these things. We aren't skilled negotiators. The board set parameters, and these people represented it. They went into the negotiations to carry out our wishes, to work for the things that we look for. I think this contract is a good deal. I think it maybe cost the board a little bit more than what we would have liked. We got some stuff from the teachers. Nobody's probably 100% happy. Everybody has a contract they can live with. And like I said last time, the most important thing is it's going to keep us financially viable. It means that we're going to be able to continue our programs that we have without reducing With regards to Act 1, what Act 1 does is it says that you can't raise the taxes more than the inflation rate. There is also an exception to that. And the exception is if the pension contributions go up, they allow you to raise taxes in addition to the inflation rate to compensate for your extra cost with the pension. Contrary to what was said here, we have not raised the taxes the maximum possible. We have never taken the exception to this point. We've managed to maintain the tax raises and resupplies to the cost of inflation without using the exemption. So we have not done that. I ran for school board because I thought that the idea of excellence in education and fiscal responsibility were not mutually exclusive. We can have a good, high-quality school district without running our citizens into the poor house with raising taxes over and over again. And that's why I ran, and that's what I intended to accomplish. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, I would also like to thank the negotiating teams for both sides of the contract and to our solicitor and their team. I believe that as part of the negotiation process, you know, everyone may, I've heard this in public, that the fact-finder made all the decisions for the contract, and that is so far from the truth. Each side had the opportunity to present their position on certain points of view, and then the fact-finder made a decision based on that. So it wasn't the fact-finder deciding the contract. It was the fact-finder deciding which side on which issue was the way she was going to go. I just want the public to understand that. It wasn't, you know, it was everyone sitting here. It was the negotiating team. It was the negotiating team for the Federation. Make the presentation, and then the decision is made. I was thinking along the same lines as Mr. Means about Act 1, and because you have the ability to raise taxes, doesn't mean that you should. And I think that we're trying to be as prudent as possible, and with the exceptions that could have been out there, we didn't do that. And I think that that's a testament to what we're trying to do in the budget process and negotiation process.
Thank you. Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. At 7:20 PM this evening, it was a happy, sad moment in the Bethel Park School District when the vote was taken. I'm happy that the process is completed, and I'm happy for the students, teachers, and all of the Bethel Park residents. But I'm sad that it took far too long to reach this point. I would like to thank all parties involved, and as Mrs. Cook suggested, it's time to put this process behind us. Let's all focus on why we're here and to continue to keep kids first and be mindful of the taxpayers and what they can afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Quickly, I want to thank both negotiating teams for all the work and the time they put in to get this done. It's been a long process. But I also want to make, I've been here for 32 years, and I've been through many negotiations. And I've seen a lot of problems come up in trying to resolve contractual issues, even once we were agreed to, to get it down in writing that both sides could understand and agree to. So I want to compliment our solicitor, Al Melo, very highly for his ability to put together the fact-finder's input from this board in such a way that a contract could come easily from that. That's not always easy to do. But in this case, once we, both sides agreed to the fact-finder's report, a lot of that contract was nailed down right there. This is what we agreed to. This is the writing we're going to accept. A couple of issues had to be cleared up, but that's understandable. But thanks, Al, very much for, I think, a job well done.
Thank you. Mr. Sustich?
Again, like everybody else, I want to thank everybody. I have two corrections to be made. First of all, Mr. Spicuzza, you are correct about the fact-finder's report being representative of what both sides offered in the petition, or position statements. But I also remind everybody that those, both parties freely accepted that position. Could you recall, the first time we had fact-finding, both parties rejected it. So we can rest assured that both the district and the union have accepted this agreement freely and taken whatever necessary votes are. There was another technical correction. Mr. Delalo, you are correct about the federal money and the stimulus money. The only thing that you really didn't pick up on, it was buried in paper elsewhere, is when the state got federal money, the state cut back on its own funding, so this district, most districts, got no extra money. And what happened is when the federal money ran out, the state didn't replenish their portion. So we did roll back to 2008 funding levels. So we are down from the money we had in 2010 and 2011. So that's part of the continuing struggle.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
In the 1960s, I was in elementary school at Logan, which is now shuttered and hopefully will be taken down very soon with a considerable amount of asbestos abatement. One of the primary principles I ever learned when I was in elementary school, and I never understood why it was in math, was the Venn diagram. Do you remember the Venn diagram? The interlocking mutually inclusive and exclusive circles? And going back to Logan School in the early 1960s, but those interlocking circles, say, were a lot of values and principles that went into this contract. And those values and principles are really, if you think about it, accountability, efficiency, excellence, you know, fiscal responsibility, you know, to the taxpayer, to the citizens, fairness to the teachers, fairness to the students, and giving the best absolute product we could, you know, for the school district of Bethel Park. And I'm pleased to say that I really feel, that's why I emphatically voted a yes for this contract, that I feel that it is the best in the world. It hasn't been a long time for this to be settled, and it's, there's always going to be contention. And as Mr. Means mentioned, no contract is going to be 100% palatable to everybody across the board. But this, both teams, both sides, again, voted yes for this. They're accepting it. There is a spirit of compromise. There is a spirit of moving forward and understanding of some of the difficulties that we face. But now we go forward. Now we go forward. One other thing I realized with being on the school board is there's always something else around the corner that needs to be done. There's always another great project that needs to be engaged. We always have to worry about, you know, the finances for it. Well, that's going to come, and it will continue to come, you know, but we'll keep working for it. We've heard enough accolades of everybody else today around the board. I don't care to do that. You know, we've heard that. And great work was done on both sides, but I'm pleased. It's behind us now. Let's go forward. Let's keep working. Got a lot to do to maintain the excellence of Bethel Park that we should be.
Thank you. Mr. Amadis?
Yes. A few small points. It may be a bit repetitive, but I think they bear repeating. Just want to mention that we, as a board, I think, could have agreed to put more money into the contract. But I think it was important for all of us that we made sure we lived within our means. Whether any of us are on the board two years from now, next month, or whenever it is, we thought it important to make sure that whoever came on the board in the future could live within the budget and the parameters that were established in the contract. And I think that was accomplished in this particular contract. I think it's important also to note, and again, it bears repeating, that our solicitor, our administration, worked hand in hand with the fact-finder to put together this contract. And in short, I thank them for their professionalism and what they did. And lastly, speaking of professionalism, I want to thank the teachers for working day in and day out, even though they didn't have a contract. I would say the majority of them did this without question, although it must have been very difficult. And on a personal note, I want to thank each and every teacher, I still have three children in the district, and I want to thank each and every teacher that didn't bat an eyelash and I don't think my kids missed a beat in any of their education for everything. They were there without a question in meetings that I had with my children, and I don't think my children missed anything, and I want to thank them personally. They know who they are. And again, that's all I just wanted to say. So that's it. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose, would you like to say?
I would like to say simply, thank you. It truly has been a long road, and this negotiation process has probably been one of the greatest challenges of my career. And I think I probably could speak for the teachers on the negotiation team, as well as Mr. Howard, Mr. Rosman, and probably Mr. Melo, too. I personally am delighted to have a fresh start with this contract, to be able to move forward in rebuilding the confidence of our community, in our schools, in our faculty, and in our students, too. We have tremendous teachers in this district, and we have great kids. And I just feel it's time for us to focus on our future and to look forward positively. So I'm grateful that this is concluded. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone for hanging in there with us. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move for adjournment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.[1593.28] Good night, everyone.[1593.28]